The Newport Beach City Council, may we have the roll call please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, thank you. We'll start with clarification items. Councilmember Daigle?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
No, I have to-
And Councilmember Selig?
None.
Councilmember Hill?
None.
Councilmember Rozansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Nothing.
I do have one. Item number eight, the planning commission minutes. I read those minutes regarding the, what apparently are competing applications for the redevelopment of the Newport Beach Country Club and so I'm hoping someone can tell me the import of the decisions that were made at the planning commission.
So would you like that in the evening meeting or right now or what would your preference be?
Right now is fine.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? I think that's it.
There you go.
I would be happy to clarify the action of the planning commission meeting of last Thursday. What the commission did was they continued both applications to a date certain, which was October 20th, and directed both applicants in terms of what they would like to see in relationship to the proposed site plans for both properties. As I think the city council is well aware, we have two applications for the same property that when they are overlapped, they do not, they are not consistent and you cannot approve both applications as submitted. Staff made some recommendations in terms of how the, both applications can be processed. There's an alternative plan community text that the staff has drafted for consideration by the planning commission and that requires a different site submital process which both applicants are amenable to process or proceed with. So in the next few weeks, staff will be working with both applicants to modify their proposal or their package for those properties and then also try to resolve the differences between the two site plans and return to the planning commission in October.
With possibly a single plan?
I don't believe it would be a single plan, but with the ability that the both applications could proceed with allowances for the other proposal. So it is a very ambitious task before us, but I think that with a plan community text as proposed by staff, that option will be available to the planning commission for consideration.
Okay, I guess we wait and see.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It'll be interesting. All right, let's move on then to the current business. And the first item of business is the Orange County Transportation Authority update on the Newport Boulevard SR-55 traffic study.
Good afternoon, council. I just wanted to make a brief introduction to this project. We have with us today representatives from OCTA and from the consultants that are working on this project for OCTA and they're here to talk about this project and the status of the project. This is a project that'll be looking at alternatives to an extension of the Costa Mesa Freeway. We've been working together, staff has, with the cities of Costa Mesa and with Huntington Beach as the meetings have been held and the study is in the process of being prepared. I've been attending all of the meetings associated with the project and the, and the study and I'll continue to do that, including open houses and public meetings as they, as they're scheduled. And also I'm available today to answer any questions you might have regarding staff's involvement in the project. And what I'll just go ahead and do is introduce Mr. Tony Petros with LSA Associates and they're the consultant to OCTA in the preparation of the study.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hen. Fellow council members, I'm Tony Petros, a principal at LSA and part of the OCTA team for the 55 Newport Boulevard Improvement Study. Before I begin, I would like to introduce my colleagues, there's Tammy Warren, Sarah Swenson, and Joe Alcock from OCTA, and Ross Lu from TRC, the prime on this project. As you might recall, back in 2006, 2007, OCTA in collaboration with the cities of Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, and Huntington Beach undertook an access study to look at a broad array of alternatives to increase capacity and enhance mobility through the Newport Boulevard corridor. That analysis and project ended in 2008 with the advancement of four alternatives that would be looked at in further detail in subsequent studies. Well, at the request of Costa Mesa, it's time now to undertake that refined and enhanced engineering and planning review, and that's this project now, the 55 Newport Boulevard Improvement Study. It will follow the general Caltrans PSR project study report process and look at what are the engineering and planning effects of a select series of alternatives that came out of that earlier study. I do want to just remark that it is an engineering and planning study of alternatives, it's not an implementation study. Funding for any final preferred alternative has not been identified nor has a preferred alternative, an outcome of this study. The objectives of this study then are to look at those advanced alternatives in further detail, further engineering, coming up with more concise ideas of what the effects of the various alternatives will be, including effects to the local businesses, to mobility, pedestrian access, as well as some rough order of magnitude cost estimates for any of their implementation. Moreover, there is a robust public outreach process that is included as part of this work, this being evidence of the start of that in Newport Beach. There's been a council briefing in Costa Mesa already two weeks ago and this same briefing has been offered to Huntington Beach as well for their council. The outreach objectives are to engage the public and the stakeholders in this process so that we understand what are the current assessments, these current assumptions of the problems along Newport Boulevard in this corridor and what are some realistic and reasonable outcomes related to these alternatives. Most notably, there is included in this effort a business impact assessment at the direction of the OCTA board to look at what affects construction and operation of any alternative would be along this corridor. I would just conclude with my remarks and then be available for questions with what are our next steps. As we move from summer into fall, there will be more meetings with stakeholders, including the businesses along the corridor, homeowner associations both east and west of Newport Boulevard. Hoag Hospital has also been invited, the chambers of commerce in the area. As we move past fall then, the actual engineering and analysis will move forward and after those more detailed analytics are completed, there will be a re-engagement in the community with your council and with the others to present the findings of that, that outcome. I would also let you know that we will be hosting a public meeting that will be in the Neighborhood Community Center in Costa Mesa, a large open house format on the 14th of September. So that will be the first opportunity that the public at large will be able to come and provide their input. We're hoping to reintroduce ourselves as the team that brought forward the access study and solicit input at that time.
How are you going to advertise that meeting, Tony?
That will be advertised through regular social media, the newspapers, there will be direct mailouts to property owners within a 300-foot radius of the study area. We'll be looking to engage through the chambers of commerce and other outreach efforts.
I would suggest that you contact the relevant homeowner associations in the area as well.
Very good, thank you.
More specifically, on the peninsula, the West Newport Homeowner Association, Central Newport, Balboa Peninsula Point, and Lido Isle.
Very good.
Just to make sure because those residents all, you know, skedaddle up that corridor on a pretty regular basis.
Yes, yes, they do, thank you. With that then, I'll just conclude my remarks and be available if you have any further questions, and thank you very much.
That's the entire presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fine.
We're not going to go through the alternatives or anything?
We were given a PowerPoint here that included more information, I just assumed that that was going to be the case, but that's fine. We don't have to take the additional time.
No, I wanted to, I'm sorry, I wanted to provide those additional handouts for you so you could look at them and you can see what the alternatives are that are being studied today. Today was just an opportunity for OCTA to provide a status and where the project's going and the study's going.
All right.
But if you have specific questions about the alternatives, I'm sure Tony Petros can, can go over those with me.
Well, I just, that in the phase, the next phase, the engineering phase, that's when we'll look at the various impacts and evaluations of say, oh, this is good because it does this, but it's bad because it does that.
That's correct.
And we'll be able to look at those alternatives. But we look at all, we're going to do that for all four alternatives.
That's correct. And briefly, for the benefit of those who don't have that PowerPoint, and I'm sorry that that wasn't made available to all, the four alternatives include, A, no project, do nothing, and see what happens through the corridor. Some minor, what we call, transportation systems management improvements, which would include signal synchronization through the corridor, bus turnout, some pedestrian enhancements. Then more aggressive opportunities and alternatives in the corridor to include looking at possible fixes at the two ends with some flyovers and grading opportunities to separate turn movements, to maybe see if that helps flow in the area, what might be the effect of that. And then finally, a, an alternative that would actually separate the two primary purposes through the corridor, through a cut and cover arrangement where local traffic would be above ground and have the opportunity to turn onto side streets where traffic that has an ultimate destination beyond that area would continue through in a, in a covered four-lane arterial all the way past 16th Street and onto their ultimate destinations. So those are the four alternatives that will be looked for, with that in the subsequent work.
Could we do that last one across LA?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where were you in your environmental review or where is the projects, alternatives?
There, as part of this project study report process, there will be a, an environmental review based on the Caltrans process. It's called a PDS, Project Development Support, I'm sorry, all the acronyms. And it is a broad overview of the possible environmental effects of the alternatives. This is not at the point yet where we have a defined project that would be subject to, say, a SEQA document, mitigated negative declaration, or an EIR.
Okay.
This is still broad planning and engineering of alternatives.
But even when you do, do your SEQA, SEQA requires that you identify alternatives?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you're going to kind of go through it twice?
We will, well, we're not to that point yet to even know what the SEQA path will be. We have an array of alternatives that will be available for consideration under SEQA if this project gets that far and if that is the ultimate desire of the agencies involved.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks a lot, Tony.
Thank you.
On to the Civic Center update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This is a, an opportunity for the staff, the public works staff, and our private sector manager, C.W. Driver, I know Williams here from C.W. Driver, to update you and the community on the Civic Center project. As you know, it's well underway.
Excuse me, Dave. I probably should have asked for public comment on the last agenda item and didn't. So is there any public comment on the SR-55 study?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, the people just left. My name is Jim Mosher. I certainly recognize there is a serious traffic problem where the 55 freeway dumps into Costa Mesa, a problem which will become even more acute if this council approves adding housing to the currently undeveloped portion of the banding ranch property in West Newport. I applaud the Orange County Transit Authority and the city of Costa Mesa for having the vision to look into solutions to that. However, I'm slightly confused. I think the word alternatives is being used here in terms of alternatives to Caltrans' longstanding wish to extend the freeway proper to industrial way, and it's unclear to me if there's any guarantee that these alternatives are a final solution to that or just a temporary fix until Caltrans eventually finds the money to extend the freeway proper, and I wish that had been clarified.
I can probably clarify that for you, Jim.
Well, and we also have Tony Bryant of our staff that would be able to comment on that too.
And then the remainder of my comment in regard to freeways, I probably don't need to remind you that an earlier council seems to have been one of the very few municipalities that signed on to a long ago Caltrans vision for building a full-blown, separate freeway paralleling the Coast Highway from Oxnard to San Juan Capistrano, in the process taking out much of our best bluff-top view property. As a result of that incident, the residents, by initiative in 1971, amended the charter with section 422, which required future councils, including this one, to obtain voter approval before signing any agreement with, with any other government agency, including, I presume, the OCTA, that would permit construction of freeways or expressways in our city or modify city streets to accommodate them. I don't know how effective that provision is or if it's been fully honored with respect to other freeway construction since 1971, but I believe that requirement is still in force and should be kept in mind regarding the implementation of these alternatives. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rozansky?
Yeah, I, I actually was involved with this when the committee first met to discuss the alternatives there. I believe that these are the alternatives going forward, that it's not going to be a full-blown extension of the upgrade-level freeway going right through the heart of 19th Street down to industrial way. The idea is to either not do anything or maybe put it in a tunnel underneath there, but there will not be, as my understanding, an extension of the freeway as it exists today through the heart of that business district.
Tony Bryant, would you comment on that, please? You've been involved in the planning here.
The, the goal of the original study was to look at alternatives to the freeway extension, so that's what this process is, and it's working together with Caltrans to come up with alternatives to, to the freeway extension, which is currently on Caltrans' master plan as it sits today.
So there's no secret plan here to extend the freeway all the way down? We're looking for alternatives to that?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other public comments on this agenda item? All right, now let's move on to the Civic Center project.
So what I just said, and I'll introduce Steve Bam.
Thanks, Dave. Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased to be here today to share with you what's going on at the Civic Center. And I think what we're going to look at today is what's going on, what does it look like out there? We're going to talk a little bit about contingencies, change orders, value engineering, and our schedule. So just to kind of see what's going on out there. This is an aerial shot, and this actually, C.W. Driver provided this photo. It's actually taken on a, I believe, a tethered balloon, so it's up pretty high. There were no helicopters involved in these photos. So this is a view of, essentially looking south towards the library, library down here. This is our new parking structure going in, and you can see that this is when they were first, doing that first deck. And then you can kind of see the outline of the Civic Center building here with all these foundations here, and then this is the community room at the end. Now, if you can see it, but there's a little area carved out here where the civic, where the council chambers is going to be. So the entrances, the signal somewhere over here, driveway's coming in and into the parking structure. Here's another view from the opposite side. Here we can see the structure a little more, and actually, this is the basement where the command center will ultimately be located, along with all the mechanical equipment. Again, the foundation for the, for the main building. And you can see a little bit of the extension of the library foundation starting here. And then the north part, we always, we don't talk too much about this because there's not a lot going on up there right now, but I thought I'd show you the picture, is we have stockpiled dirt where the dog park's going to be. So it's just kind of sitting right now and, and that will probably start up later in the, in the project, but it's there and it's still on our drawing boards. And just to give you a little feel what's going on there, they're pouring an awful lot of concrete and it's going very fast. In fact, even as these photos are way outdated, even though they're not that, not that old, most of all the decks have been poured at this time, and so it's, it's a pretty substantial structure up there right now. Here's a shot of the guys pouring the deck, you can see a lot of the reinforcing steel, the tension wires and a lot of electrical that's in there, so it's fairly complicated. Here's a view of the parking structure coming up from the library, this would be the entrance. If you came around the library, and this would be kind of the back way into the structure. Another shot from the front of the structure, this would be the, on the main entrance. And this is, I threw this shot in the presentation to kind of give you a feel for what it's going to look like inside. There's a big retaining wall, a shoring wall adjacent to MacArthur, and we've cleverly managed to put in some gaps so that there's natural light that filters down into the, into the structure, and I just thought that this is kind of a nice shot to show that. In fact, there's a shot of the cutout, although above it, there's, you know, there's forms, so you'd actually be able to see the sky in all these locations. In fact, we intend to have some plants on the lower level to kind of green it up. Here's a shot of the foundations adjacent to the library, this would be where the, the library will be extended out and the cafe and, and other facilities. Another shot of kind of standing up near where the council chambers is, this is actually the foundation for the community room with the structure in the background, the library back there. And the shot of the basement, and this is the, the back wall of the basement here, and this is actually probably, some of this is already poured, I would imagine. So it's going rather quickly, we're slowly getting out of the ground. And this is just a kind of a shot to show you the, we still have this, the environmental areas, the wetlands protected, they're fenced off, no one's getting in there, we have still a bunch of dirt stockpiled here along Avocado that will ultimately be transferred onto the site when we, when we get closer to having the buildings up and out of the ground. So now the fun stuff here is, let's talk about the money. So far, the contingencies, and these are the construction contingencies that are included in the GMP. As you recall, the Phase 1 was the mac, the mass excavation and the shoring wall. And so we've had a couple of costs, we had a minor landslide, we had to redo some grading to, in order to protect our, our wetland area and make all of our ADA grades work for our paths. We deleted a wall out of the, the dog park area, so we, there was a credit applied to that. I don't know if that wall comes back later on, I guess it does in the third phase. And then we had to do some revisions. As you may recall, when we, when we, when we let this first phase go, the shoring wall was kind of a design build, and we had a, some parameters in the shoring wall contract where we thought we had everything covered, but when we got into building plan check, we had some difficulties and we had to make some changes to the design, which, which took a little bit of extra dollars. So we had to add some money into that. We also advanced the library HVAC utility relocation into this phase. So really what this is, is this cost right here, the 264, is really a Phase 3 cost that we had just advanced, and it was just a lot easier to take it out of the contingency and make it up for it later. So it kind of warps our contingency numbers a little bit, but I think in the end it, it just pencils out. And we also had, we also ran into some rock that we, we didn't anticipate, a lot more rock than we realized, especially underneath MacArthur where we were trying to do the shoring wall. So there was a little extra cost there to deal with that. And so, in the first-phase contingency allocation, we ended up with about $42,000 remaining of the original contingency, but I'll remind you that we also advanced some work from that third phase. Second phase is, is a little better. There were some costs regarding the stair treads, you know, a lot of these things were allowances in the original GMP, so sometimes they, they'd come up a little more expensive than we originally thought, and there was a missing, some missing electrical power stuff that, that wasn't accounted for. But so far, our contingency balance is pretty healthy at $234,000. Phase 3, we haven't had hardly any expenditures in that construction contingency, and really the only thing we found was that when we uncovered the foundation for the library, the waterproofing was in horrible shape, and so we had to overexcavate and redo that waterproofing. And also, we, we decided to take that on in an effort to maybe help some of the water issues that are already existing in that library basement where they have a sump pump that seems to run continuously all day long, so it's amazing. It might just be the, the sump area itself that where all the water's coming in, because when we dug down adjacent to the foundation, we really didn't see a whole lot of water, just a very minor amount. So if we look at our totals here, we're probably about, contingency used to date is less than, or a little over a half a percent, or a half a percent of our total cost, and we have about 70% of the construction contingency remaining, so we're doing pretty good.
Steve, are all the contingencies transferable from phase to phase?
Well, we haven't had the need to do that so far. I think if we were going to do that, we would probably come back to the, the building committee and talk about that, whether we wanted to do that or not. At the end of the day, Driver's responsible to deliver this project for the guaranteed maximum price, and how they use that construction contingency is really up to them, because at, at the end of the project, the more they've saved, the more they get back, so certainly...
I have a clarification on that, because it sort of said two different things, that if there were changes, you'd come back to the building committee, and then you said if there's, that Driver has total flexibility to manage it with that.
Well, no, what I'm, I'm saying is that we haven't said, we haven't really talked about that issue. If we're going to use the Phase 1 contingency to pay for Phase 2 items, we haven't, we really haven't crossed that bridge, we haven't needed to, and I don't think we, I don't think we anticipate needing to do that.
Well, is it not spelled out in the contract?
I don't believe it is.
Okay. And then, because you mentioned this, $125,000 that you're shifting into Phase 3, if you had completed Phase 1, then you would be out of contingency.
Yeah, well, I, I think, you know, we're really looking at the bottom line. I mean, whether we use all the contingency in Phase 1 and not any, and less of Phase 3, it really, it really doesn't matter, because all that money is in, in play. It's all in play. And, and every dollar that, that Driver saves is a dollar, 75% of that goes back to the city, and they get 25%.
Right, but you're really not saving it if you haven't built something that you're going to get paid for. You're just deferring it.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're, we're moving things around within the phases, yes, and I, but I think ultimately the, the bottom line is the numbers, the numbers are the same, regardless of whether we've spent it out of one or, or three. So, you know, what's on the horizon of, as far as contingency goes? We do have a couple of things we're working through right now. I just wanted to kind of point out briefly that we did have some problems with our utility connections right during, actually after the bid process and right before construction. And Edison brought us some, and AT&amp;T and Cox did bring us some changes to their, to the requirements that caused us to possibly bump up our costs, but more importantly, it might have hurt our, our schedule as well. So we're working through those right now to see, determine what those numbers are. We also had, as we repeat, reported previously to you, we had some weather damage during the winter storms, and we've, we've submitted a, a cost to FEMA of $62,000. We're hoping we can get reimbursed on that, but if FEMA does not reimburse us on that, that will become a contingency item. And also, I just wanted to point out that there are going to be some miscellaneous design changes and price omissions that will probably occur over the course of the project. We're hoping they're going to stay relatively small. Again, our goal is to preserve that contingency so we can get some of that back. And that leads us to the owner's contingency, and the good news is, is so far we have issued no change orders to the owner contingency, so it's, the whole, the whole balance, the $2.6 million is untouched. And I wanted to remind everyone again that any of those type changes that go through the owner's contingency are, have to go back through the building committee and reported back through council. it back through Council. Value engineering, it's a continuing process, as it says on the slide, and I say that because value engineering really started the day we started this project. Hiring Driver, along with our architect at the same time, really gave us the opportunity to really look at this project through different lenses and really scrutinize the design and come up with ways to save money and do things more efficiently. But since the GMP had been formed, actually, when we went out to bid, we did a lot of work with, Driver did a lot of work with their subconsultants, their subcontractors, and we generated about $668,000 worth of value engineering items, and it's a long list, but a lot of it belongs in electrical insulation, stone, and some roofing costs. And those are actually included in the GMP. Now, since the GMP, we've already saved some other dollars, and we've confirmed some of these, and the two, the one area that we really looked at was the parking structure. When we went from a closed parking structure to an open design, we saved the cost of mechanical ventilation, and we also recently found some really good savings in changing out the parking structure lighting to a lighting system that we think will be just as efficient as the original design, but actually costs less to install. Now, pending under review, we're still working on these. We have another $376,000 worth of project savings that could be there, and we're looking in the areas of landscaping, waterproofing concrete, electrical, and the HVAC. So we're fairly positive we're going to be able to process most of those. We also wanted to show you that we did save some money in our design fee from the schematic design process through the construction documents. We managed to save $188,000, and this is money that was not billed, that we retained. So our design team did not use all of their projected fees, and so we've got about $1.5 million of total savings so far. I also wanted to talk about the schedule, and I'll tell you, we're aiming, we're still aiming for the move-in date of, in December of 2012. But I will tell you, there has been some problems. There have been difficulties. As I mentioned previously, we had some issues with the shoring wall approvals. We had weather issues, some issues with Edison and their design changes, and we've had some minor changes along the way that we reasonably expect to have, things that just didn't seem to work out right, or things that had to be relooked at. And a lot of these delays were, you know, a day here, a day there, and the main, the big thing that we have here is the final one on our list here is the steel package submittal. We've had some delays, and I think part of it is, is because the project is very complicated, and the steel, since it is exposed, is very critical to this project. We really need to make sure that steel is right, and because, something that would, if we, we had steel delivered to the site that was incorrect, it would not only hold the project up for many, many days and weeks, but it would also, if we had to accept some of it, it would really affect the aesthetics of the project. So our architect's probably been a little bit over the top on making sure this is right, but I think it's really important for us to do that, and I know it makes C.W. Driver a little nervous, because I know that schedule's getting awfully tight, and I know William's got some ways to hopefully get us back on track. But I will tell you, we are kind of, we're starting, all the buffers we had in the schedule before are starting to disappear, so we're really, we're really paying attention to that, and we're looking at ways to hopefully speed the whole thing up. So just to summarize, our construction project to date, as you recall, all of our GMPs together, we're at $104 million. We've expended approximately $20 million to date, which is kind of light right now, because we haven't started paying for that big expensive steel yet. So far, looking at our construction contingency, we're doing very well, at a little over a half a percent, and that's pretty good. If we can get through this project with a 2% to 3%, I think we're going to be really happy. If we can keep it lower, we'll be really happy. So we also have, showing our potential savings here, we do have 70% of the construction contingency remaining. We have all of the owner's contingency remaining, and then we have the value engineering. And if you would recall, back in March, when we brought you the third phase of GMP, we were, and Dave twisted my arm on this, we were optimistically projecting about $101 million as our optimistic cost projection, and I'm really happy to say that it does appear that we are looking very good to achieve that at this point, barring any big issues. The big thing that's coming up next, our big cost item is the curtain walls, and I know C.W. Driver and the whole design team working very hard to make sure there aren't any glitches in that, and so we're, I think we've got the right team for the right job. I'm really pleased on how it's moving forward. Driver's performing very well for us. They're keeping things on track. They're really looking at the dollars, and our design team has been very supportive as well. Our architect has been very good to work with, great people. I think we're very pleased with how it's come out. And that's kind of the update, so happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, questions from Council? Councilmember Hill?
I would just like to make a comment that I've kind of been tracking this from the back room a little bit, and I would echo how pleased I am in watching this project proceed. I feel very comfortable with the work that C.W. Driver is doing. I think they're watching the money as if it were theirs, and I feel very comfortable with the way staff is handling the project. This is the first major, major project that the city has done in the construction management mode, and I think it's the right process, and I think it's being done and executed very well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dagel?
Yes, I have a question for William. You're with C.W. Driver, the general contractor, project manager?
Yes.
Okay, and it's been characterized, the project's been characterized as a really complicated project, and I understand that part of tracking that is an RFI log, a request for information, and what is that looking like? Are you getting like, and apparently, maybe you can describe what it is, and then are there a lot of information requests being filed, or how does that look?
Yes, well, first of all, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Councilman Dagel. That's a good question. We do, as you stated, this is a very complex project from a construction standpoint. There's a lot, as Mr. Batum had mentioned, there's a lot of exposed structural steel. There's a lot of very visual aspects to this project that require a lot of fine tuning of all the pieces of the project to make sure that everything ends up exactly where they're supposed to be. With that, there have been, we do track any types of issues that do come up, any questions that we do observe, either out in the field as things are going in, or things as we're reviewing the design, and as our subcontractors are putting the shot drawings together for the project. We have regular meetings with our subcontractors on a weekly basis at the very minimum. We have regular meetings with the design firms. So we are tracking all the RFIs. We do have an RFI log. For this complex of a project, I wouldn't say we have an excessive amount of RFIs on this project, which is good. We were able, early on, being involved, very early on in the design process, it helped kind of reduce the amount of design issues that we're facing now, so that we have fewer as we're moving forward. So I don't know if that...
Okay, so do you have like 10 RFIs, or you have over 100?
Oh, no, we have over 100.
You have over 100, okay.
We have over 300 right now.
Over 300?
Right.
And then that would be, any given RFI could potentially lead to a change order? Is that kind of the process? Where a subcontractor says, you know, this pipe doesn't really seem to fit there, I need a change order, or how does that work?
Not every RFI necessarily results into a change order. The only time a change order will be issued on that is if, it's something that significantly changes the design of the project, where we've run into an issue where the current design just won't work as it's shown, and then we have to deviate from that, and if that deviation actually, in fact, causes additional costs, then that would generate a change order, and we do track those as well. But, so that's kind of the process. As we move forward, though, many of those items have already been identified. Most of the RFIs that come through are minor issues that don't really have impacts to the project budget from a cost perspective. Most of them right now are, that we've seen, are minor things, hey, we see this here, can we move it here? Or it's something that we identify, part of what we do is we look at this thing way out, way out ahead of where we're going, so that we can identify potential problems along the way. And as we identify those, we bring them to the design team's attention via an RFI, usually. And if we're able to get a hold of a lot of those issues early on, then we can make those changes without them resulting really in any delay or any types of monetary impacts to the project.
Okay, and then my final question is, it's been stated that the project started with a pretty good buffer in terms of a timeline, and things were getting tight. What are your strategies to hold the schedule?
Well, when we built the schedule originally, you know, as the project progresses on, we've gotten creative in resequencing work as we've experienced some of the delays that Mr. Batum expressed in his presentation, and there were some things that did, that we had to work around. And so we've been doing this constant workaround plan. We have regular weekly schedule meetings with our subcontractors and internally amongst ourselves. A lot of the, a lot of the things that he mentioned, the little buffers that we did have here, that we had some ability to move some things around because of the time, because of just the time the project has progressed to, we've kind of run out of a lot of those. And so, we're still shooting for December 2012 completion as of right now, but we do see that there's much more of the project down the way, and so it's just a constant evaluation on a regular basis, determining how we're going to end up getting through to the end, and with that being our goal.
Great, thank you, William.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from Council? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have public comment on this agenda item?
My name is Jim Moser again. I just wondered if somebody could clarify who the Building Committee is, because I didn't see it in the list of committees that are in the quarterly business report that's being reviewed tonight. Thank you.
The Building Committee is Mr. Solich, Mr. Rozansky, and Mr. Hill. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Steve. Good work. Keep it going. All right. Do we have public comment on the closed session agenda, or any other items?
Mr. Mayor, if I may briefly, on the closed session agenda, there was a typographical error. Actually, it's been in the last three times, I believe, that we had this closed session error, closed session agenda item. Morn versus City of Newport Beach, it's Orange County Superior Court case number, actually has a 4 at the end, so it's, that last set of digits is really 00447004. My apologies, I typed that, so I forgot that digit. So that accurately reflects now with the 4, that that in fact is the case number in the Superior Court.
Thank you, that's been troubling me for some time.
I'm sure it was, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for causing that loss of sleep.
Okay. Don't do it again. May we have public comment, please?
Mayor Henon, members of the Council, my name again is Jim Moser. I would like to make a less than one-minute comment on each of three separate closed session items. The first is with regard to Item A4, which is Morn versus City of Newport Beach, and that number did bother me, because I was trying to look up the case, and I couldn't find the case, until I discovered that it needed an extra number. I know very little about it still, and I know even less about what you plan to discuss in closed session, but I did see in the quarterly business report to be discussed later this evening, that the city's main reason for spending taxpayer money on this matter is said to be that it is required to do so by the zoning agreement with Morningside Recovery, and I see that on tonight's agenda, you're very likely to be terminating that agreement. So it would seem it would be in the taxpayer's interest to save money by terminating this lawsuit as well. A second comment is with regard to Item C, the Marina Park boundary dispute. I've undoubtedly already said more than you cared to listen to about that. By my count, this is the fifth time, according to the agenda announcements, that you've instructed City Engineer Dave Webb as to the price you're willing to pay for a certain parcel of land. I don't know Dave personally. I see him in the audience, but I don't know him personally, and during that long six-month period, I have heard him testify a number of times on a variety of subjects at committee meetings, and he strikes me as a highly competent engineer with a good head for figures. So my comment today is that at least to the public, it boggles the mind that you would have to repeat your acceptable price to him five times. Finally, with regard to Item E, which I assume is your continuing search for a new city attorney, I wish, would again like to wish you well in that endeavor, and I again wish to encourage you to try to make the process a bit more public, so that the residents can at least see, for example, that you are including in your search candidates for city council who actually live or plan to live in our city, and who as a result, might be motivated to leverage the law to work for the people who they could view as neighbors, rather than seeing the city government as an abstract entity separate from the people who empower it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any cause for comment there?
Not really, except I just wanted to comment that the negotiations with the State Lands Commission are complex, and indeed, Mr. Webb is a very competent engineer, and he's doing his job quite admirably, and the Council is giving us policy direction as we go through the give and take of negotiations.
Also, as far as the city attorney living in Newport Beach, I don't, I mean, didn't we learn that we can't require those sort of things?
You cannot require the city attorney to live in Newport Beach. You could, as you did with the city manager, give incentives. Speaking as a city attorney, it's difficult for you to compensate sufficiently to buy a house in the city of Newport Beach.
Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session.